Will we come with a public hearing? Would you mention that?
Daisy mentioned that.
Is that why David came to watch him?
I'm not sure, that's awesome.
Would you please rise and put the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item tonight is on the public hearings. We actually, I want to apologize for not having a public hearing that we originally intended to have tonight because we didn't properly schedule it. But we are going to work as a council through this meeting to see if, make sure if we can schedule it at the nearest, closest time. So the public hearing and second reading for the Gottlieb Street won't be held tonight just in case there was anybody here to wait for that. Beth, next item.
Is audience participation?
Oh, excuse me, roll call.
Yes, you do.
If you could, if you want, I can.
Counselor Bickford?
Here.
Counselor Mason?
Here.
Counselor Bowie?
Here.
Counselor Pomelo?
Here.
Counselor LaRochelle?
Here.
Counselor Ward?
Here.
Counselor Lund?
Here.
Thank you. If you want, next item.
Public hearings, none. Audience participation, at this time those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward. Please use the microphone at the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit comments to five minutes or less.
Thank you. You're consistent.
Thank you for that. My name is Larry Fillmore. I live in Lisbon. First thing I'd like to do is personally thank Chairman LaRochelle and this council for adding to the agenda, "Audience Participation Respond." I believe this is a step in the right direction into restoring transparency in government to Lisbon. I want to commend each of you for the courage to put what is best for the town first. And I mean that sincerely, okay? And you know how critical I am, so please, okay? The next thing is, I need to know what constitutes an outstanding loan. I have a purchase order, I have a promissory note, and I have a check, all issued by the Town of Lisbon to the Atlantic Commercial Cleaners. This is money that's never been repaid to the town, so why is it not considered an outstanding loan? These documents say it is. At the last council meeting, it was said it was because it did not follow proper procedures. But during the timeframe when this loan was issued, there were no procedures to follow. When we asked for reconciliation of the Economic Community Development Department, Dot and myself, several others, we were told by Mr. Eldridge, I'm not picking on him because he's gone, I pick on him all the time, okay, that there was no need to spend that additional funds because we all recognized the fact there were no procedures in place. However, they have taken the steps to correct that so that it would never happen again. Okay? But how many more loans, or how many more things took place back in that day timeframe or whatever that we don't know about? We don't even know if we got missing money because nobody kept any procedures. There was no record of it. So this is why we've always stood by the fact that I think we got to have a forensic audit in order to make sure the town is whole. I know we do a yearly audit and they check the books and they go, yes, this transaction equals this transaction. They're not doing forensics. So we don't really know if we identified everything. Keep in mind, the lady who found the 32-5 and the errors in that only lasted six months and she was run out. So we never will know how much money is out there or missing or anything else. We don't have a clue. Why is the layout of the budget so confusing? Line items are not in their corresponding departments and the only thing that you can take from this is it's an attempt to conceal funds. I mean, all line items that pertain to a department should be in that department. They shouldn't be scattered throughout the budget. Why aren't documents published by the management of the town proofread prior to being published to the public and the world to see? Silly errors and misspellings makes this town look like it's run by a bunch of hicks. The monthly managerial report contains simple errors and the municipal budget has numerous errors in the definitions of the line items. A prime example is the town manager receiving $300 per mile for mileage. Come on, I know, that's got to be an error. Please don't tell me that that's true. Or, under grant match, it is stated that equipment, $15,000, is for the equipment for dispatch. Chief Brooks just told us he has a grant for $97,000 for equipment. If it was for equipment, we could disregard that line because the $97,000 is not matching according to Chief Brooks. So I looked into that and I was told it was for furniture. Well, I got to thinking about that and that really baffled me. It's a $15,000 grant. If you matched it, that's $30,000. We have one dispatcher on duty at one time in one room. Now, it gets better because under the police budget, under furniture and fixtures, there's another $600 in there for furniture. So you're going to try to tell me that the town taxpayers and the town of Lisbon are going to spend $30,600 for furniture for one person, one room, okay? That to me seems a little bit excessive. Okay, the next thing is, I extracted this from the website. This is the calendar for this month. On the 24th, it says, "Special Council Meeting." Okay, that's cool. It says seven o'clock right here. On the 25th, it says, "Special Council Meeting." And when you put your cursor on that, it says, "The 24th at seven o'clock." Then you go on to the 26th and we have another special council meeting, okay? And it says, "It's the 24th at seven o'clock." Then on the 27th, it says, "We have yet another special council meeting." And you put your cursor on that, it says, "The 24th." This is out to the world to see. This is what the people in the town of Lisbon have got to go with. Now, is there a special council meeting on the 25th, the 26th, and the 27th? Or is that a mistake? We don't know out here in the public. We don't have a clue. Hey, I'm sorry, we just don't know. But it's things like this that get published to the world that does not reflect good on the management of the town of Lisbon. And finally, the 2% wage increase, a bonus increase of whatever you want to call it that's in the budget for everyone, do you realize that if you took that 2% away from the department heads, just the department heads, there would be sufficient funds to fund everything in the library? You wouldn't have to cut the kids' reading program or the summer reading program, okay? And the department heads are making $166,000 more than their counterparts in Skowhegan. Something wrong with that picture. Thank you.
Anybody else for audience participation?
Dorothy Fitzpatrick, resident of Lisbon Falls on School Street. I really would hate to disappoint the council and the public by not speaking. I'm on the advisory board. As Larry Fillmore just said, the town manager's asking for money. When most departments and line items have, okay, back up a little, is asking for money when, in most departments and line items, only half of the money has been spent to date. What does the town do with the unspent portion? Does it go into surplus undesignated funds? Town manager keeps saying, "We don't have much money in surplus undesignated funds." If that's the case, where is the money going? Or are the department heads all notified at the last minute? Oh, boy, you've got a little bit of money in your budget to spend. You better spend it or you won't get that money allocated next year. If that's the case, that's wrong. That's wrong. The town manager's proposing on giving 2% raises as bonuses to all town employees. I'm sure the town employees deserve and need the raises, but many are unemployed. At least these people have a job. All our roads are in poor condition. That money could go to improving our roads. Poor roads are making a bad impression on people traveling them, especially people from out of town. Town manager wants an extra $20,000 to hire a planner. The development director is already making $56,000 a year and we're losing businesses. So why not put that to a part-time position and hire a planner? It would save money. Hopefully, it would improve the town and hopefully it would bring businesses into town. Handouts we got last week at the budget meeting, town manager gave an example of one mil increases. One mil for a property valued at $150,000 would be $13 a month increase. No, okay, $100,000, the monthly increase would be only $8 a month. Doesn't sound a lot, but it would be $96 a year. And that's on top of your already probably $2,500 real estate taxes. Property valued at $150,000 would be $13 a month. Doesn't sound like a lot either, but that's $256 a month, a year. That's added to the already over $3,000 you're already paying for taxes. How are people going to come up with that money? Some are unemployed, many are not getting raises. This is, I just hope that every councilor here would search into their hearts and do the right thing for the taxpayers in the town of Lisbon.
Any other takers on audience participation? CNN, we'll move on.
Audience Participation Response.
All right, we'll see if we can answer some of the questions from last week, Mr. Fillmore. Question was raised by Mr. Fillmore about the idea of our assessment, Mr. Van Tynen, about the assessment work he's done going into the database. Looking into this and the response is, it is being uploaded into a computer that actually has the software in it. It's a separate computer, it's not actually the one that's online by the town, so it is actually updated. Then once this actually goes online, it will actually be the idea of just connecting the two. So basically, it is being recorded. If something was to happen to him today or tomorrow, it still would be there for anybody to use. It's just the process, it wouldn't do anybody any justice by uploading it on the regular computer until it is complete. And I think the council actually requested, at the time when we asked that, it was, would be kept but not actually updated till the assessment was complete. The next couple of questions you had was actually pretty much asking about some of the items like tonight about the budget, about some of the items as far as professional development. One thing I got to really ask for you and for Dot is that the budget is still ongoing and a lot of the lines you have are, as you've seen from our last meeting, are ongoing discussions. I think the council is, you know, looking at every avenue, looking at the budget very completely as we have in years past. So it's really hard to answer a lot of those questions at this point because it's really early in the game. But as you can see by our previous meetings, we are asking the questions and we're moving forward. And yes, Dot, we all realize the taxes are going to be a burden, there's no question about it. There's, I don't know a lot of finances yet, but I, one thing I do know is there's going to be, have to be some shared sacrifice on every level because that's unfortunately the position we're in. Again, the other question was about the grant money, the third question you had, the grant money again is kind of ongoing, where it was put in the budget, how it was put out there, is going to be moving around as we go through because we are trying to get it into the correct location so that the council can understand it and understand what it's being appropriated for and where it's going to be spent. There was another question that was asked about Steve's assistant, the idea of the training that she is going through as far as for what she's actually training for. And at one point in time, it was actually mentioned that some of her training was for paralegal. I think that's what you had brought up. At this present time, one of the things that, asking the questions, her base training right now that she's going for is human resource, which is something that in her situation she really needs at this point in time because with the need in town, most of the first contact for a lot of citizens coming in for assistance is to Pooh Jody. So that, I think the training is relevant. With the contracts that we have through the town, with most of the unions and everybody, I shouldn't say everybody, through the proper procedures, people are eligible for ongoing training. So it isn't something we really can say absolutely no to, but we just want to make sure that the training is relevant to what they're doing. And in this case, it definitely is. And I think that answers the ones from last week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Consent Agenda. Order 201243 to approve the mass gathering permits for the Moxie Festival and Lisbon Promotions Committee, the following mobile home parks, Avery Street Park, Beaumont Court, Brookwood Court, Colonial Gardens, Davis Street Park, Gendron's Park, Grimms Park, Ridge Park, Sabattas Creek, St. Anne's Park, Town and Country Village, Wurumbro Estates and Wurumbo Park, and the following renewal vitulers licenses for Angelo's Pizzeria, Benoit's Orchards, Big Apple Doing Business as the C N Brown Company, Canton Pearl, China Inn, Chummy's Midtown Diner, Dr. Might's Madness Cafe, Dunkin' Donuts, Food City, Lisbon Getty, Lisbon House of Pizza, Mark's Deli, McDonald's, Miller's Variety, Sam's Italian, Slovak Catholic Association, Subway and Extramart, and the minutes of March 27th and April 3rd, 2012.
So move.
I'll second that.
Are those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Council Orders, Resolutions and Ordinances. Order 201244, Route 196 Sewer Line Project.
Ryan, if you can get us up to speed.
Good evening. A few weeks ago, I was here to talk about the lining of Route 196 sewer prior to the road construction project taking place out there. As you know, from the budget, we had two sections that we identified to rehabilitate before the road construction. We looked at several alternatives for the section, it's about 500 feet in front of Napa to be replaced. We were here last fall to talk about open trench, a couple times. Over the course of the winter, we had, we looked at the possibility of pipe bursting the line and we received a proposal for pipe bursting from Ted Berry Trenchless Team. Part of that section, we could not pipe burst because of its proximity to the gas line. In some areas, the gas line was almost touching the sewer line and that pipe bursting process would have been too disruptive. So we, they had ended up proposing kind of a line, the upper section, pipe burst the lower section. And based on the lining prices we got from the 12-inch sewer main lining project at the Two Rivers end of 196, we had asked that company that was the low bidder to give us a price for lining up here. And based on everything involved, we recommend that we actually move forward with the lining of that section of pipe utilizing Eastern Pipe Service, who was the low bidder on the 12-inch sewer project line in 196. And they'll end up doing both jobs at the same time if they're awarded the proposal.
And that proposal was for the 31-120?
Nope, for the 18-392 for the Napa section. What I did to confuse everything was, there was a footage discrepancy between what we'd received from the camera company and what was actually measured by the Eastern Pipe Service. So their original proposal ended up being $4,000 more based on 100 extra feet of pipe that needed to be lined. So I just wanted to bring that back here and make sure that that number was approved versus the number that was originally approved.
So just to make sure what we're trying to approve tonight is the 18-392, which actually is for the second project and the supplement of the first project.
And then the 18-392 is for the 6-inch sewer lining project in front of Napa.
Okay.
That's one.
Okay.
And then I'm asking to make sure it's all right, increase the agreement with Eastern Pipe, the $4,000 for the 12-inch sewer lining project, which will take place, both, everything will take place later on in either May or early June. The lining company, after we, after I came to you, they're suppliers in Alabama and they were hit by the tornado, so everything's delayed, was delayed for four weeks, but they're shipping materials now. And based on the schedule, it looks like it will be May, end of May, beginning of June when they'll be doing that work for us.
Any questions of council?
Couple.
Yep.
The RFP that went out for the Napa section, did that request bursting?
We, no, what we, we only put out one formal RFP for the Napa section and that was the open trench design. We looked at the, and we were going to go with that, $50,000 is what the lowest bid was last fall. And that was what we were going to do this spring, was what we originally decided. Over the course of the winter time, we ended up talking to Ted Berry about pipe bursting, that possibility, because I always assumed it was more expensive, but it ended up being cheaper than open trench. And we attempted to do a formal RFP, but there's, there's no one else in the region that does pipe bursting. And so we never did put out a formal RFP for the pipe bursting project. We did do the formal RFP for the 12-inch sewer lining project and that's why we asked Eastern Pipe to give us a price on the lining portion because it was difficult to find one company that could do lining and pipe bursting. I mean, Eastern Pipe only does lining, Ted Berry only does pipe bursting and lining up to a certain inch. They only do small diameter lining, they mostly do house connection lining versus, you know, big, big pipe, 12-inch and bigger in the street because they just can't afford the equipment necessary to do that part of it. So their niche is the pipe bursting part of it. And we, we couldn't find anyone else in the region that did pipe bursting.
So Ted Berry's company bid both pipe bursting and lining, right?
It's a, well, it's half and half. Half of the length was going to be lined and half was going to be pipe burst.
And that came in at?
Twenty, 24.
Twenty-four something, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's back there. Twenty-three, 22, 989 for the whole. Twenty-three, twenty-two, nine eighty-nine for the whole thing.
And the lining is just as good as bursting?
Pipe bursting is actually a little bit better, because we're increasing the pipe size from six-inch to eight-inch. But then, what isn't factored into that pricing is what, we would have had to dig up to connect all the services, we would have had to dig up to put in a trench box so they can put the pipe bursting equipment in the trench box to be able to pull the bursting head through the old pipe. And we would have just been into, I mean, the added cost on top of that, we could have been up to ten thousand dollars more just for the, you know, and it would either have been with Public Works or more than likely a subcontractor, because we don't have a box big enough to accommodate their equipment.
So in the lining, are we making the pipe smaller?
In the lining, it's minimally smaller, but the flow will be increased because it's a smooth bore insert versus the, I mean, what's there now is clay tile joints, the whole nine yards. We did analysis, our first lining project we did was in 2001 or 2002 down by the bowling alley. We did extensive analysis to prove that you actually have increased flow with the lining, even though it's a smaller pipe, because it's, it's a lot smoother.
And we don't really need the eight-inch pipe, the pipe burst?
No, I mean, it would have been better, I mean, all things, if money wasn't an object and the timeframe wasn't an object, quite frankly, the pipe bursting or even the open trench would have been better in terms of future capacity. But that section is, right now, only serves Crest Avenue and Gartley Street, which on Gartley Streets, I believe, is just the school and the church. So there's just, there's so little flow coming through there that the six-inch line accommodates what we have. The problem we had with the six-inch line is it was starting to fall apart, because it was the old clay tile style pipe.
What's that, Mike?
And the, on the extra hundred feet, where, where was the error made in that hundred feet?
The numbers we used when we put out the RFP was based on the camera work that we had done to identify the distance, you know, between manhole to manhole, as well as the, you know, the condition of the pipe. And we used those numbers in our RFP, because we've used, Ted Berry had a camera, miles and miles of pipe. They don't know, they don't know what happened. They came back and camered everything for free to verify. Footages were correct this time, and, you know, that information's been transmitted to Eastern Pipe, so everybody's on the same page going forward right now.
Okay. What's that? Any other questions?
I'd make a motion to accept the bid from Eastern Pipe Service for eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and, including the increased cost for the twelve-inch sewer lining from Eastern Pipe of four thousand one hundred and seventy.
I'll second that.
Not to exceed the thirty-one, one-twenty, right?
Right, not to exceed that, right.
We have the motion, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Order passed, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
The next order we are actually adding to the agenda, pretty much what this is, is I spoke to council a little bit before, but we can have some more discussion of it. What I'd like to do is have a order 2012-45 to, to order or schedule a special workshop, excuse me, special council meeting for next Tuesday. This will be the public hearing and a second reading of the zone change on Gartley Street. And I'll open that for discussion if there's any. If there's no discussion, I entertain them.
I'd make a motion.
You'd make a motion?
To have a special meeting on next Tuesday for the public hearing with Gartlet Street and the vote and second reading for council.
I'll second it.
Okay. First and seconded. All those in favor?
I think I should recuse myself, because I'm recusing myself from the whole vote.
That's fine.
So I'm recusing myself.
If everyone could speak up so we could all hear.
I'm recusing myself from the vote.
Got it.
So we will have a special meeting next Tuesday.
A very short one.
A very short one, prior to.
Depending on the public hearing.
Exactly. Well, as long as it needs to be, but with that one item on hand.
Yep.
Order passed, six zero.
All right, thank you. Next item?
Is other business, finance director's report.
Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. In front of you, you should have your report for March. Looking at revenues, March brought in just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is primarily due to excise tax collection at one hundred and thirty-six thousand, state revenue sharing at sixty-six thousand, and a U-RIP payment of twenty-six thousand. State revenue sharing is sixty-nine percent collected, with another thirty-five thousand that came in during March that is not currently reflected in your report. You'll see that in the year-to-date numbers for next month. Last year at this time, we were seventy-five percent collected on a budget of seven hundred and fifty thousand. To achieve our budget of eight hundred and thirty thousand, we would need to average seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand for each remaining month. We will continue to monitor this account through the remainder of the year and update you as to where we stand. Excise tax is just over seventy percent for the month. Last March, year-to-date collection was at sixty-six percent. In order to meet our current budget, we would have to bring in a hundred and twenty thousand per remaining month, and that is well within our average for each of those said months. So excise tax has certainly turned around within the last couple of months, which is good news. That is all I have for revenues, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions on revenue? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Okay. Looking at expenses, total expenditures for the month of March were three hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Of this, sixty-eight percent, or two hundred and seventy thousand, was related to personnel services, including wages and benefits. Contractual services made up approximately fifteen percent at sixty thousand. This is primarily due to waste disposal fees of nineteen thousand, legal fees of eight thousand, and town building expenses of nineteen thousand, which, again, as a reminder, is where we pay for our heating oil, electricity, and telephone charges. Lease purchases made up seven percent of total expenditures at thirty-one thousand. Repairs and maintenance or, and/or supplies made up six percent of our total expenditures at twenty-five thousand, primarily due to gas and fuel purchases. Looking at the expenses, I still have no real areas of concerns. We are over expended on legal charges. However, historically, we have always over expended this line. We will further, we will be further over expended in the abatement account before the end of the year, as we will be doing journal entries to write off some accounts. And winter public works is over expended by seventeen thousand related to winter sand salt purchases. Other than that, everything else looks to be well within reason for this time of year. And that is all I have for expenses, unless you have questions for me.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I think you might have already explained this before, but under the fire department, the repair and maintenance operating supplies, looks like it's eighteen thousand, overspent?
Yes, Chief Galloppo and I still need to find time to sit together and do a journal entry to reclass some of those expenditures from the supply line into his capital truck replacement program.
You all set?
It will be done before the end of the year.
Okay. Mike?
The only question I have is where we're over expended. Do we have a plan to cover those over expenditures by underrunning in other areas?
I do not have a hard and fast plan for that, but we will continue to monitor, and I, I will be updating the department heads just as to where we stand on those, so we can, we can start to keep track and be more diligent with the line items.
What's that, Mike? Any other questions for council?
And as my final side note, as of March 31st, we had collected ninety-four percent, or, yeah, ninety-four percent of the eight point nine million for our total tax commitment, which is slightly above last year, where we were only ninety-three percent. So, all is well.
Good. We'll let you go for now, but we'll soon be working with you again, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no town manager's report, and appointments none, and counselor communications.
It's time. Any communications?
Also.
I'm off, Scott.
Any takeers at all? I'll just have a brief. As, as Dot and Larry said today, I mean, the budget actually is ongoing, and I really hope that anybody that is in town that has any concerns about the budget this year, pay attention to what we're doing, because it is going to be a trying year, and I think the council is doing their best to try to find some happy medium ground with the budget. Unfortunately, I don't think the council is going to be able to make anybody happy this year, but we're going to try. So keep informed. If you do have a concern, please, and voice your opinion, so we can actually hear them as we go through. There's going to be many nights that we're going to be talking and discussing the budgets and trying to work as a team to try to come with a reasonable solution to try to, again, make, make the best out of what we have. The, there will be a public hearing coming up, so if, please, if you do have concerns about the budget, please keep those dates, so you can come to the public hearing and voice your opinion. In years past, our public hearings have been very limited as far as for input, so it's always nice as a council to actually try to do what the people want, and part of that is getting the input from the public. So this budget season is ongoing, it's far from, far from over, so a lot of the discussions you hear are basically just items that we are still discussing. So again, if you have a concern, feel free, and we haven't got there yet, but we're working. And that's it for me. Anybody else set for communications? Next item?
Executive session, none. Adjournment. Order 2012-46 to adjourn to a budget workshop with the budget advisory board.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? And we will be going into a workshop, we'll be moving down on the table, and everybody's welcome to stay. What we are tonight is going through police, public works, and the fire department's budget.[1754.36][1754.36][music]